So this is the Wednesday, August 18th, 2121 meeting, a special meeting of the Franklin Township Planning Board. Franklin Township is operating under Declaration of State and Local Emergency due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. It has been determined that the public's attendance at meetings of the planning board will pose a risk to their health, safety, and welfare. Therefore, this meeting has been relocated from the council chambers at the Franklin Township Municipal Building to a virtual meeting format is being conducted utilizing telecommunications equipment in performance with the directives of the state of New Jersey. The relocation of this virtual meeting of the planning board was posted in the township's official newspaper, the Courier-News, township website, and within the municipal building. This notice detailed the following means of public participation in this remote meeting. Either by a link to the virtual meeting via WebEx or a call-in number for those without internet access. Public inspection of application materials was made available via the township website and/or in the planning zoning department in the municipal building. Formal action may be taken at this virtual meeting. As a reminder to board members, please mute yourselves unless you wish to speak or to provide a vote. Please withhold questions until all the applicants, witnesses have finished presenting, at which time the chair will ask the board for comment. Instructions for public input are as follows: For those members of the public that are watching via WebEx who wish to speak, there are two options: You can press the raise hand button to use this feature, click on the participants icon in the lower right corner of your screen, which will open a new participants window on the right side of your screen. In the lower right-hand corner of that window, there will be a hand icon, click on this icon to raise your hand. For those members of the public that are listening via the call-in number who wish to speak, please press star three. At the appropriate time in the meeting, township staff will announce your name, unmute you, and you will have opportunity to provide comment. Please provide your name and address. If providing a statement, the board attorney will swear you in after speaking. If on the WebEx, press the lower hand button, and if calling in, press star three again. Okay. So, um, virtual flag. And we'll do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Okay, Christine.
Uh, Councilman Chase?
Here.
For how?
Here.
Mahir Rafiq asked to be excused this evening. Carol Schmidt?
Here.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Here.
He was here.
Mustafa? Mustafa?
Yeah.
Okay.
There we go.
Charles Brown?
Present.
Robert Thomas?
Here.
Sammy Shavon? And Chairman Orsini?
Okay, it doesn't look like we have any minutes, resolutions, or discussion.
Okay, Mike, um, we had heard late this afternoon that Insight is moving, uh, being carried. If you prefer, I can, I can pull up the screen and read it off if you want me to. Cause I wasn't even able to get a final agenda out, so.
Okay, do they have to renotice or no?
No, that's why I'm gonna make the announcement, so that they don't need to.
Yes. Sounds good. Why don't you go ahead and do that?
Okay. So anybody that's here this evening for the hearing for Insight Property Group, docket number PLN dash 21 dash 00011. This is a C variance in which the construction crew inadvertently constructed the side yard at 34.9 feet rather than 35.0 feet required at 619 Somerset Street, Somerset Block 162, Lot 1.01 in Zone RC. For those of you wishing to participate with that hearing via virtual WebEx, this matter is being carried to Wednesday, September 9th, oh my God, September 1st at 7:30 PM. And the website is Franklin, TWPNJ.org forward slash home, forward slash components, forward slash calendar, forward slash event, forward slash 17578, forward slash 2232. If you're going to be listening via the phoning, the phone number is 1408-418-9388, and the access code is 1794962320. As a courtesy, we had this up and available to all the outside public since we started the meeting. If you were unable to gather any of that information, please feel free to call me, Christine Woodbury, the board secretary, at 732-873-2500, and my extension is 6215. Okay, Mike.
Thanks, Christine. So, um, since we have no minutes, resolutions, or discussion, I had to open for a general, uh, planning comments, so I would make a motion to open to the public for any general planning comments, uh, not the subject of a separate hearing tonight.
Move to open to the public.
I get a second on that. I get a second on that. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, meeting is open to the public now for any general planning comments. So if you're here for, um, the library, um, that will have its own, uh, public, uh, discussion, uh, open, opening to the public, since it's its own hearing. So this is for anything in general. And Mark, I'll ask if you see anybody wants to speak.
You're muted.
Mark, you're muted.
And Mike, and Mike, you just lost you. But anyway, um, Mike, there's nobody, I'll, I'll answer for Mark. There's no hands raised in the public, so you can, uh, make a nominate, whatever you call it, to just close.
Thanks, Christine. So, uh, I move the, uh, public, uh, comment, general public comment period to be closed.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, Mike, before you start the next hearing.
Go to our hearing.
Before you start the next hearing, Mike, Peter Vignolio, our board attorney, would like to make a small announcement for the public.
I'm aware of that. Oh, Pete Flores, jurors?
Great, thank you. Uh, so the first application on for this evening is, or first matter is Franklin Township Public Library, South Branch, application PLN dash 21 dash 00014. Um, just some general guidance as to what the board's role is for the matter this evening. This matter is before the board tonight for review of a proposed municipal project requiring the expenditure of public funds pursuant to the municipal land use law. It is not hearing on an application. The board's role under the municipal land use law is to review the project and supply its recommendations to the library board and the township council. The board, uh, is not going to review and approve the project. Typically, notice by publication and mailing is not required for the review of a project by the board under the municipal land use law, but notice was provided by the township and the library as an accommodation to the public. The public will be provided with an opportunity to express their comments concerning the project, and their comments will be entered into the minutes of the board. But just to stress, this is not a application for approval this evening. This is a project review under this municipal land use law for comments by the board to the library board and the township. So I think that's the framework that, uh, everybody kind of needs to understand that we're working with this evening. Um, this board is, is not going to approve or deny an application.
Thanks, Pete. Does the board have any questions of Peter for framing that topic tonight? No, that's good. So the Pete Peter, this is essentially like, can we hear, um, you know, for example, Claremont Road School or the school board coming for its general, uh, fire plan or, or things of that nature? Um, same, same sort of, of vein, correct?
Absolutely, or, or a public park or something like that, you, you provide input regarding the project, but you don't really approve the project, you just provide your feedback, um, you know, um, as a board, since they aren't subject to review and approval by the board.
Okay, thank you. Um, so if there's no questions from the board, let's move into that hearing, Franklin Township Public Library, uh, South Branch, PLN 21 dash 00014.
That's ready, Donald Whitelaw, for the applicants. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Mr. Vignolo is correct, and I'm not going to reiterate what he just said. Uh, this is an application on behalf of the Franklin Township Public Library Association and the Township of Franklin. It's to instruct a new southern branch of the Franklin Township Library System. Uh, the proposal is to build on Lot 12.01, Block 3702. It's an approximate 2.3 acre, uh, site. It's next to the Franklin Park School. We're proposing a one-story building that's approximately 5,583 square feet. It will have associated parking and other common site improvements, uh, to service the library. There are a number of other jurisdictions having, uh, the right to review, uh, this application. Uh, the site plan was prepared by the Reynolds Group. Jeff Reynolds, uh, is online tonight, I think. And he'll take you through that site plan, address the other, uh, status of the other applications that are pending. Uh, included with that submission was a traffic report, uh, submitted by Harold Malts. We have received a report from your technical review committee, so Mr. Reynolds will also, uh, address that as well. The application is not for an approval, it is for recommendations from this board, regarding the application. So with that, I would ask Mr. Reynolds to be unmuted and have him swear.
Mr. Reynolds, thank you. Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
You could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record, please.
Jeffrey D. Reynolds, R E Y N O L D S. Uh, the Reynolds Group is located at 575 Route 28 in Raritan, New Jersey.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, Mr. Reynolds, you're a licensed professional planner, stay in New Jersey?
No, I'm a licensed landscape architect.
Okay, and so your testimony tonight is from that?
I am a, the project, and I'm a project manager for the Reynolds Group, and, uh, I've been a landscape architect for 20 years now, and, uh, I'm ready to present the project to the township.
Okay. So you're accepted.
Thank you. Um, can I share my screen? Let's see here. Uh-huh, here we go. Can you all see that screen?
We can.
Okay, great. I'm gonna flip back. This is the, uh, original plan for the subdivision. This is a four-acre lot that was, uh, owned by the Board of Education, and basically we subdivided the lot, as, uh, Don had said earlier, our attorney, into two, uh, two-acre lots. Now, basically, the dimension plan here, we're showing that it's a one-way street existing that travels to the, uh, Franklin Park Elementary School, and we have one-way access into the, uh, new library site with angled parking, uh, driving around the loop of the site and one way out. So it's one way in and one way out onto a one-way street, basically, with a loop around in case somebody wanted to get back into the site and find a parking stall. This is a little bit better to look at. This is showing the, uh, site rendering colored in, and this is more fun to look at. Uh, basically, the drainage, uh, comes from the east to the west for the existing site, and that's why we have our retention pond down in the left-hand corner down here. Everything is going to, drainage-wise, it's flowing away from all the residences, it's flowing to existing drainage systems into the street. Uh, we've got the site draining simply to the center where we're gonna captivate some water in some rain gardens, transferring to a second rain garden, and then going to the larger bio-retention basin. So the stormwater, and then connecting into the existing systems down on Baylor Street. So the stormwater seems to be pretty straightforward in that everything is going to continue to flow in the same direction, and we are going to, uh, manage it with the best management practices provided by the state. We have, we are showing one way in with angled parking, so that the parking is very simple. You can only go one way, you can only back out one way, and, uh, there shouldn't, shouldn't be any traffic problems. Everybody's gotta do the same thing. Nobody can get lost, really. Um, you can see we've, uh, provided a sidewalk across the entire frontage of the library, and this sidewalk will actually connect to the Franklin Park School. Okay? And now, um, I have planted extensively the site, pretty much. I've got a lot of native New Jersey species in here. Um, we've planted a nice Norway spruce buffer along the neighbors at 15-foot-on-center, and we've also planted, planted, uh, the Norway spruce along the northern edge of the property also. Uh, we are providing a chain-link fence on the northern and the western edge of the property to prevent people from wandering in or potentially animals coming into the site or something like that. Um, there exists a fence on the neighboring property already. He's got a chain-link fence and a board-on-board fence. Uh, we have kept the library as far away from the neighboring properties as possible. And you can see where we come into the front entrance here. I have, there is a four-by-eight monument sign that will give direction to the people that the, uh, library is right here on our right. So we have good vehicular access, we have good pedestrian access around the site, uh, pedestrian access around the bio-retention pond. We are, uh, locating a bicycle rack for children or adults. We are also locating a few seats, a couple of seats in front of the library, and then we also have seating areas on both ends of the library. The upper seating area is for the adults, the lower seating area is for the children, uh, as the library is pretty much split in half for the adults and the children. Um, the lighting on site is gonna be brand-new LED shoebox lighting. We can cover the entire site with approximately six lights to get, uh, 18-foot tall. And then towards the building, we have put in some lower bollard lights for the pedestrian walkway, which should look very, very nice. Um, all of the utilities are going to be coming in from Clover Place intersection here. We've got sanitary, we've got gas, we've got electric. And I think that's, and, uh, I think that's it for for utilities. Um, I'm not sure what else I could tell you. It's a really, uh, right now, the site exists, it's a, it's kind of a, a garbagey woodland, it's more of a thicket, I would call it. And I think this would, uh, replace that thicket very nicely with a, with a beautiful new library. Not sure what else I can tell you. Really, it's a very simple site plan. We've got plenty of plantings for beautification. We're meeting the best management practices. It seems like the site flows very, very well. Um, there is a, gonna be a, uh, a drop-off inside of the building. There is a canopy over the front entrance of the building.
Jeff, could you comment? Could you comment on the other applications, DRCC County, just to bring the board up to date on that?
We have already gotten the approval from the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission. They're just waiting on the resolution right now from the township. Uh, we've also got approval from the county for, uh, the subdivision and for the site plan, because it does not affect any county facilities. Um, so basically, we're just waiting on township approval at this time. Uh, everybody else, uh, the other agencies have approved the site.
You had an opportunity to look at the technical review committee letter, is that right?
Yes, I did. And it seemed that there were a bunch of minor, uh, engineering comments, none of which are substantial in nature, and we should be able to handle all of those comments without any problem. Is there anything? I'm not sure if I missed anything. It's a very simple site plan.
You've, the sewage authority was, uh, applied to, correct?
Yes, we have will-serv letters for water, sewer, electric, and gas. So, uh, everything should go smoothly.
And is soils in or is that pending?
Soils, uh, we have done soil tests, and we have, uh, found that the soils are good, the soils do accept groundwater infiltration, and that's why we, uh, have the design, uh, approved such, because everything seemed to work pretty well.
And you also submitted the letter of interpretation from the DEP, is that right?
Uh, no, we did not. That was submitted by somebody else, and, uh, it turns out that there are no wetlands on the site.
Thank you. Those are the questions I have for Mr. Reynolds.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me? This is Mark Healy.
Yeah. I can hear you.
Okay, well, two, two things. Um, one, I'm, I'm unable, I'm unable to bring in the project architect. Um, so, Mr. Uh, Iovino, uh, you may wanna log off and log back in, uh, except for whatever reason, I can't bring you over as a panelist. Um, my other thing, Mr. Chairman, I, as far as the, the conduct of this meeting, do you want to, uh, have question-answer after each, presenter, or do you wanna have them go through the whole thing and then have the questions and comments at the end?
Hmm, probably go through the whole thing. Other than, uh, other than the architect, do we have any other witnesses?
Well, actually, I had the traffic engineer and the architect on standby. In case you had questions, I was not going to have them present testimony. I was just gonna present Mr. Reynolds.
Okay, uh, so the only question I have of Mr. Reynolds is, uh, any comment on the Environmental Commission report? They have suggestions, they were generally, uh, quite supportive. Yeah, go ahead.
The, uh, one comment they had was about, uh, potentially using some, uh, pervious surface in lieu of the rain gardens. I don't know if that's a good comment. I would prefer to use the rain gardens. They're so small that they're gonna be very simple to maintain as opposed to pervious surface through a whole parking. You may need to, that could be a lot of maintenance. You'd be vacuuming that up and making sure that the, uh, you know, the pores don't get clogged. I think this is a simpler system. I'd, I'd stray away from the pervious at this point. I think the pervious is good for certain projects, but not so much for this one. That's my.
Okay, they also had comments about, um, solar cells on the roof, electric charging stations in the parking areas, um, bike racks, um, ensure that all, the outside LED lighting, uh, utilize full cutoff fixtures, which I think you're, you testified for. And they also made a comment on, uh, positive comment regarding the tree plantings, um, but also noted the need to preserve as many existing trees as possible. So, um, any, any comment on any of those points?
Yes, uh, it's trying to save existing trees. I did walk the entire site. There was maybe one tree, and it fell in a really bad spot. So basically, there weren't, there's not, nothing worthwhile in that site worth saving. As far as all of the other things like e-bikes and e-cars and all that, that can be added to the site plan without any problems. It's, uh, if, if, if the library wants it, we can do that. We can provide all of those things, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the board has generally been in favor of trying to look forward, uh, to the future and, and, and add some electric vehicle charging, or at least the ability or to like, run the infrastructure so that it, they can be installed later. Uh, but I'd like to see one or two of them myself. Um, as far as, you know, solar on the roof, I, I think, you know, that's up to the library board, but that's, that's, that's a fair comment. Um, and bike racks, I'm sure that, um, you know, given, given the proximity to Franklin Park School, the sidewalk connection makes sense to have bike racks there. Um, so, so I would, I would be supportive of all of those things.
Right, we do provide a bike rack, a pretty large one, and if they need another one, there's plenty of room to put additional bike, bicycle racks.
Okay, thanks, um. Since you were going to only, um, present the architect and, and, and traffic engineer, if necessary, have them sort of on standby, um, let's just see where the board's questions go, so just to open it up to, to board questions and comments, given that your primary witness is, um, finished presenting.
Sure.
Any, I'm gonna answer questions from the board?
I don't have any questions, but I think you, uh, I just have a comment. I think you've, you've utilized the site well and, uh, responded to some of the suggestions made by the Environmental Commission. I think it's a good project.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
My main comment is that I think there should be a sidewalk out to Claremont Avenue, uh, so that, and there are sidewalks on Claremont Avenue, so that people can walk to the library, uh, particularly from all of the Society Hill Development on the other side of Claremont Avenue. The plans show a sidewalk along Eden Street, but they say not in contract. Future four-foot-wide sidewalk connection to Claremont Road. Implication seems to be, yes, it would be a good thing to have a sidewalk there, but we aren't paying for it. Well, I think you should, uh, put in that sidewalk out to Claremont. It doesn't, it's not very far. Somebody gave me an estimate, it would cost about $12,000 to do that. Because if you leave it not in contract, future, it may get, never get done.
We did look into the sidewalk connections down there, uh, to Claremont, and there aren't really sidewalks along Claremont per se that go to places. So I'm not sure if we would just be leaving a connection point for Claremont to also provide more sidewalks. And we did do a cost estimate, and it came out to about, I think, $50,000 to come out to, to Claremont.
I think there's a sidewalk on the far side of Claremont, not on the near side.
Right, and I think the sidewalk ends very soon after, uh, that intersection.
The side, there's a sidewalk that goes partway out Pleasant Plains Road. Oh, and I've been trying to persuade the township to complete that out to Route 97 that would, uh, provide more available connection. I think we're going to get that. I think we're going to get that.
Well, thanks Ted. Yeah, I mean, I would be supportive of as many connections to, to make, you know, the circulation to 27 to Society Hill as easy as possible. So if there's a way to connect to Claremont, I would certainly support Ted's suggestion.
Since this is indirectly a township project, what about considering using the infamous sidewalk fund that we've been collecting for, for years in order to provide that connection? Instead of a, one way or the other indirectly, it's the township paying for it, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a great suggestion, Bob. I think we should, that would be a perfect, perfect way to use that sidewalk fund.
Yeah, I think the township really needs to master plan all the sidewalks and take a good look at everything before they start, you know, just running sidewalks wherever they're going. That's all, just, just get a real big master plan in action for everything, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Just makes sense.
Um, any other board questions or comments?
Chairman, this is Charles Brown. I just want to state my support for connection out to Claremont as well. I was also thinking that the property frontage on Clover Place should also include a sidewalk to allow for people not to have to walk in the street even for that short distance. So wherever we can provide connections, I'm all for. I think it is sending a message throughout the township that we really value and support walking, especially to the library to cut down on traffic in this neighborhood. So I think it would be a great addition to the project.
Thanks, Charles. I agree. If there, if, is there any other board comment? So hearing none, I suggest we go ahead and open the hearing to the public. And again, we'll keep, we'll keep the architects and the traffic expert on standby in case. You know, there are questions that need to be addressed, but we'll see how things play out. So I'll entertain a motion to open to the public from this hearing.
Move to open to the public.
I will second. All in favor? A meeting is open to the public at this hearing? And Mark, go ahead and
Yeah, so looking at the attendees, it looks like there are no call-in folks. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, there are no call-in folks. Everybody's on WebEx, so to remind the public, if they want to participate, they can use the raised hand function in WebEx to alert the board that you want to make comments or have questions for the board. Not seeing any, Mike. We do have public here. Do you want, would you mind? Oh, here we go. Here's somebody.
I do see one.
Yep, yep. Okay, so yep, okay, so I'll unmute Mr. Brocious. Hey, go ahead, Mr. Brocious. If you could give us your name, spell your last name, provide your address.
Christopher Brocious, B R O S I U S, 28th Central Avenue, Franklin Park.
Go ahead.
My comment is I don't even know why we're doing this boondoggle because there ain't nobody even going out doing anything. This big school next to the house where I live has no activity at it. You're just doing this because you want to get that $1.2 million grant from the federal government, which is our estate, and it's our own money in the first place. I mean, there's no reason to have this. You're knocking down the woods. You're destroying the wildlife habitat. I mean, this is, this is a big waste of taxpayers' money at a time when you can't justify wasting taxpayers' money. That's my comment. I mean, I know you're not going to agree with me because you want to spend the $1.2 million from the state, but that, I mean, I think it's, it's it's just common sense. There's no reason to be doing this, to be knocking down a green area. It's a wildlife habitat just for the and you don't see anybody utilizing any of these buildings. And who knows when we're going to be utilizing these buildings. They keep coming out with a new variant every two weeks and then a new booster shot. And the matter, it's just, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mark, there's a Veronica chatting me. She said she doesn't see where to raise her hand. I told her it's in the bottom right-hand corner, correct?
Yeah, Mike, can you read the instructions real quick again? Just so the public know how to, I think some, some of the people logged on a little late.
Yeah, so if you're on the WebEx, yeah, so if you're, if you're on the WebEx, which everyone is, it, you'll see on the bottom right-hand corner of box that says participants. If you click on that box, it's going to open all the participants, yourself included. If you have that box open.
Okay, so I do see a Veronica. I will unmute her. Hi Veronica, if you could give us your name, spell your last name and provide your address.
Yes, the name is Veronica Avener, A V E N I R. The address is 60 Clover Place. So I do have some questions. So I called the library, the head librarian of New Jersey, and I was told that the Board of Trustees of the library actually made an application for the grant specifically for this location. Okay, so I was told that there is no reviews or anything and the grant was approved. They were relying on the planning board and the local authorities and commissions to actually do the reviews. Okay, so my question about that is this, did the planning board know about this? That the Board of Trustees basically made a unilateral decision to choose this site without consulting anyone? We didn't know about that. So the first time we ever heard about this was when we got the letter. So according to the head librarian, this application was submitted quite a long time ago. So did anyone in the board or anyone else in this township know about that? And approval of that grant is specific to this location. Nothing else. So did anyone in the board know about that?
We can, Mr. Vignola, would you want to, would you care to respond to that? I'm not sure what the relevance would be for the, for, for the role of it. Ma'am, I'm not, if you, I'm actually speaking to Mr. Vignola right now. And what I'm, what, and what I'm asking him to, to address is what relevance would that have to the planning board's role in this process? Because the planning board did not choose the site. The planning board is not building a library. The planning board under the law has been asked to review this site plan and provide comment. That is it. That is the sole role of this board right now. And, and, and ever. So, Mr. Vignola, can you explain if there's any relevance to the proceeding tonight with regard to that question?
And I can step in and say, essentially, that, that's the, the issue that Ms. Avener raised isn't really of any moment to the board this evening. The board's role tonight is to review the plan that's before it. The board does not get involved in site selection. The board does not get involved in grant funding. This is a planning board and the specific role that this board has under the municipal land use law for a project of this type is to look at the project as it comes before it and provide its comments regarding that project. It, it doesn't ask how the project's getting paid for. It doesn't ask whether any other places were considered. It, it just says, this is the project and these are our comments. So I can understand that you may have questions regarding that, but those aren't questions that would really be raised to this board because that's not what this board's role is in the process.
Okay, so I will point out the relevance for me as a resident, okay? The relevance of that question is does that tie the planning boards or the township's hand when they come to make this decision? Because I would agree with Chris. I see no point in doing this now, you know, in the pandemic. So my question is, does not, does that, that 1.2 or whatever, how many more, how many millions of grant? Does that tie the planning boards or the township's hand and rubber stamp this project? That is my point. Okay, I understand this is not the planning board's decision. I just wanted to know if anyone else knew about that. Because that was a unilateral decision on the Board of Trustees of the library's part, okay, without consultation with anyone. So basically that ties, you know, that's a Damocles sword, right? We have this 1.2 million. We're going to lose it if you don't approve it. Right? So, and also I need to tie this into a comment that was made in one of the first few meetings. There was a question, who's going to sue whom? Right? If they're in your records, who is going to sue whom? Right? So my understanding of that comment is that, okay, if this is not approved, there's going to be a lawsuit that's going to happen. I don't understand the way the board works or township works. I just understand that I have this library that is about to be built in my backyard and a habitat that's about to be destroyed. I just want to understand the machinations that have happened to get this through to this point. Okay, so let's set that aside. My question now would be a technical one. I am looking at the traffic report. And it says specifically here that there is no conclusive conclusion that is based on data. Right? It says here specifically, and I quote on page one, right? Traffic count intersections, capacity analysis and side generated trip assignments to area roads were not performed as part of this study. Right? It is noted that accurate traffic accounts cannot be performed at any location as existing traffic volumes have been greatly impacted. Parenthesis reduced particularly at the adjoining Franklin Park Elementary School due to the statewide COVID-19 impact. Right? And then there also goes in the, let's see now, on page two, right? Due to the current COVID-19 impacts on traffic activity, accurate traffic counts could not be performed on Baylor Street. Right? It's all over the, the, it's all over this report. So what did they base their data on? Projections based on the transport engineering organization. Those are estimates based on nationwide numbers, not on local numbers, right? Okay, so the other thing is on page four, January Adams. She was consulted and her, her comment is she said that the, the, the numbers were probably higher than what they would expect, right? So probably is the operative word there. There are no numbers to support the probably. That is an estimation. So my point here, right? And it's peppered all over this document. The traffic report is best based on a guess because you, there is no report here about the traffic that actually happens in the existing branch. So that's part of the equation, right? You have the traffic that's going to the school, the traffic that's coming from the residents, but there is no data here about the traffic actually coming from the branches pre-pandemic. So you're asking, this report tells me that there is no data to stand on. This is a fifty thing. This is a guest debate. So I'm asking the planning board to really closely look at this report because then if you're going to base a decision and a recommendation based on this report, you're basing a recommendation on a guess fifty-fifty. There is no data supported. And your documents here that you have given us, it's peppered all over the place. So that's my comment. And the other comment that I have is why do you need to, who's the landscape architect? Why do you need to disregard the recommendation from the Environment Commission that you should preserve as much of the habitat as you can? Why level the entire thing? I am looking at your plan here and you are leveling everything up to the fence of my neighbor and almost to my, to my property. Why? What does it serve? Why do you need to level everything and disregard the need for habitat of existing wildlife? Why? Because it's prettier? Is that what it is? Is that what it boils down to? It's prettier or you make more money? Right? So you have to understand our point of view here. You understand this from your point of view as planners, as government people, right? You have to understand this from our perspective. We live here. We are the collateral damage of this project of yours. Right? Collateral damage along with the wildlife. Right? This is what we are to you and you don't care because there's only four of us here. Right? Who've always been attending these meetings. You've ignored our voices. You've never paid attention to us and you're sweeping us under the carpet because there's only four of us. But hey, we live here. We are the houses affected, but whatever it is that you're doing, whatever mistakes you make, we will be affected. Do any of you really live here? Will you be here when something went wrong because you didn't plan correctly and the sewer went wrong or the drainage went wrong? Are you going to be here? No, you're going to be in your nice cozy houses away from the library, away from the cars that will be here up to eight PM. And you have not even counted on the regular activities that the library does that extends all the way up to ten, ten PM. Right? So that's, that's my piece. So my whole point here is that you have no data to stand on with this traffic report. And you cannot make a recommendation and ignore the fact that this has worked. Thank you for your time.
We do have a call in person. At the beginning phone number seven three two six six eight. I'll unmute you. Hello, if you could provide your name, spell your last name and your address, please.
Hi, this is Annabelle Alvarez. I'm at 60 Clover. My last name is A L V A R E Z.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. So thank you for taking my call. So I do reiterate the point of the previous caller, why? Why are we doing this? Really? But it's fine. It's pre-COVID and like what Veronica's point, the data that we're basing this on. Right? Why are we doing this? Because we have a $2 million. But it's fine. But what data are we basing this on? We know that the, the township needs a South Park branch library, right? Because of the existing library pre-COVID. But why this location? When it's, you know, it's forested, so I take exception to Mr. Reynold, Mr. Reynold's comment that it's a garbage something or a thicket and there's only one tree. I live here. I walk there almost, you know, every day or at least once a week. It's not just one tree. And it's not like a garbageing thicket, Mr. Reynold. So I'm sorry. Have you been here? And there are trees that live there. There's like, you know, the foxes that live there, the deer. So on the environmental report, they said that no impact to the wildlife because there are more better areas for them nearby that they will be, I guess, displaced. My question to that is, they're animals, right? That's their environment. The other place are better. Wouldn't they have found it? Wouldn't they have been using that instead of this little, you know, place that we have here? So I question that environmental impact. So that's just what I want to reiterate. And I know your decision right now as a planning board is a recommendation, but I'm, I'm actually kind of unclear then about that. How does the process work? Who can we look up to as residents of this township? To be there, to be our guardians, to be to be the last overseer of, of our rights as residents of this. If you only review and not approve, is there another board that will need to approve these plans? And to make sure that our interests are addressed? Can someone answer that for me?
Yeah, I would say it would be Township Council. I mean, the library gets
I mean, the library gets funding from library tax. Taxes levied by the library board. Library Board and Township Council would be, would be the place that I would, I would go. You know, our, our authority as a planning board is limited to just conforming to master plan. Yes, it is. We had a preliminary hearing with the subdivision that, that confirmed that. And basically, we're, we're, we're looking at the plan as, you know, is it, is it a viable plan? And it is, you know, there's nothing being asked for in terms of, of variances or anything like that. You know, we're just looking at it, you know, is it, is it a viable plan not to approve? Much as we do a courtesy review for schools, if you recall several years ago when Claremont School, same thing, they came before us, we made some comments, some recommendations, but it wasn't, it wasn't an up or down vote. So I would say that, you know, we're, we're, we're limited in the scope of what we can consider as, as the township, as the Planning Board Attorney outlined at the top.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, if I can, if I can get in here just a little bit, just to use an analogy with the Claremont Road School. The school district, the school district decided that another school needed to be built. They do their planning on facilities and they decide where, you know, what types of schools need to be provided and where. The planning board reviewed that site plan. The planning board didn't question the school district's planning for their facilities. This is this very similar process. The library board has decided that they need a southern branch. And they've identified this site for the southern branch, just like the school district found that site on Claremont Road School. And again, the planning board's review of that was limited to that site plan. That's the same thing that's going on here. If you have questions about the need for it, the funding for it, et cetera. The planning board has nothing to do with that. So as Mr., as the chairman said, you may want to bring it up to the library board and the council.
Okay, so in terms of your recommendation, basically, the only thing you could do here is that make sure that the plans that are presented follow the rules. Or whatever, I don't know, guidelines, practices, best practices of.
Yeah. Essentially, that's it. I, I mean, does, does the plan look viable plan? There, you know, are they, they're, they're providing sidewalks as the circulation is, is the, is the parking adequate? The landscaping, it's an aggressive landscaping plan, the way it's shown here in the landscape rendering. Could you leave? More in the way of, of natural vegetation? I suppose so. Instead of doing those plantings, though, you may actually be better off from a visual standpoint with those, with that row of spruces that they're providing is probably going to be a more of a visual block than what, than what you have there now. But, you know, I'm sure, I'm sure it's, it's actually less, less costly to, to the library board for the cost of the project to leave the, leave the existing landscaping. I'm not, I'm not sure that's the better solution, but I'm sure that could be done. But basically, our role is society draining properly, is the site circulating properly? Is the site meeting all the planning standards? And it does that. It's not, it's not an up or down vote, it's simply rote planning.
All right, I'm disappointed in that because I've been attending to all these meetings. And my understanding is that when they, when the, what do you call that, the subdivision was done? That, that's fine. We were told, you know what, this is just a subdivision, we're just approving that, there's nothing, there's nothing. We will all come back here and all the, the plants are going to be reviewed and, you know, for whatever. And it will be, it will be reviewed and then another decision will need to be made by the planning board to go. For them to go forward.
Yeah, essentially, 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 that's. Yeah, essentially, this is, this is, yeah, no, I understand. No, I understand. And I mean, this was, this was the second hearing when they're actually coming back to build something. But I mean, it's even, I'll even give you a more, more mundane example. The municipal gazebo, even they came before the planning board as a courtesy. You know, whenever there's municipal funds expended, right? Whether by the township, the library board, or the school board, it's a courtesy review. But it's not an up or down vote because, you know, we're, we're, you know, they're, they're the ones expending the funds. And so it's the school board, the council, the library board, who's actually developing the plan.
So, so you're, so sorry, just to reiterate, after this process, if say, for example, you made an action here, where else can we take our concerns so that we can be heard?
Library Board and Council, much like. Library Board and Township Council. No, no, different. There's a library board, there's Township Council. And I mean, if you look at your tax bill, there's a library tax. So I mean, I think, I think they have open, open meetings and, and, you know, you would, you would go there as well as to council. But I think council would probably direct your library board. Much as they would direct you to the school board if it was a school. So that, that would be my suggestion.
Okay, so just one more, so in terms of like, this, all this document that was presented to you, right? And I know, I, I don't know, some of them went, went way far above my head, I can't understand. And you as a planning board member, I assume, you, you review them and sort of, and uh, try, you probably understand them better than I do. And can propose suggestions and recommendations, right? So are there, I would like to hear what kind of recommendations you would be giving to the builders based on what you've heard from us the residents right now?
Well, there was a technical review committee report. On the applicant and, and Mr. Reynolds testified that they could comply with all of the comments in that report. And there were many. I answer, I asked about the Environmental Commission report. Where there were provisions that they suggested for bike racks, for electric car charging stations or extension of the side out to Claremont Road, which we might be able to do through the Township Sidewalk Fund. But that was something that the board recommended. So I mean, these are all planning comments. We're not, we're not going, we're going to, to, you know, render, render an approval or denial, like was said. But this is all the, all of the planning comments that came in from the Technical Review Committee and from the various Environmental Commission Report, from the Sewerage Authority Report, from the D N R Canal Commission Report, which was supportive pending, pending county and municipal approvals. So I, I think, I think those are things that we already, already have covered in the balance of, of the hearing that we recommended.
Okay, so nothing about maybe further studies of the items that we've raised? Nothing, no recommendations on that? Part of it?
Well, there was, there was, I know that there were in the past wetlands questions. So the Department of Environmental Protection has issued a, a letter to the applicant. It was requested from January Adams and, and the State Department of Environmental Commission has responded that there are no freshwater wetlands or water present on the site. They went and visited it, so that letter of interpretation is good for five years. Obviously, we, you know, you heard me, heard me ask the applicant to consider preserving more of the native buffer. But I mean, personally, I would be, I'd be careful what you wish for. I think that the, the rows of, of blue spruce would actually be a better visual block than, than the vegetation that's there now. But, you know, I, I think, I think that would be a recommendation is to leave some more of the natural vegetation, if that's what you want. But I think, I think overall, you know, those, those are kind of the comments. And I, I think you might have heard some, some of the board members talk about the sidewalks and the circulation element.
If I may, Mike, this is Jeff Reynolds. It's really impossible to save existing vegetation on that site. The northern, northwestern corner is the only area where we can save the natural woodland. And there is going to be a nice chunk of woodland between the existing school parking lot and the back of the library. So that was the only spot that we could not touch. Everything else has to be regraded and nothing, no existing vegetation can be saved on that site.
Yeah, and let me just clarify what the site is. So if you recall, the site, the area was subdivided a few months ago. And this is the southerly portion of, of the site. The northerly portion, which is the part that, basically the back half, if you will, which is basically up into the north here, separates this site from Garden Avenue. So those homes at the end of Garden Avenue, this is not back up to Garden Avenue. There's another similarly sized, similarly sized area between this development and, there you go. So it's, if you can see those two lots, this, this development is on that southerly lot. The northerly lot is staying undeveloped. Just wanted to clarify that.
So, so are you, the reason that you have to, have to do this is, how does the site drain naturally now?
It naturally drains towards, right now, it naturally drains towards the Franklin Park School. And that's why we have our detention basin over in that corner.
So if it truly drains that way, why would you have to regrade it? If it's already doing that naturally?
Because. We are following the natural drainage patterns, but we are developing the site. And we are going to continue with the drainage patterns remaining basically the same, even after the site is developed.
And Jeff, that's a stormwater management requirement. Is that under the new regs?
That's correct.
So essentially, even though the site's draining in the direction you want it, because you're building something on it, which is actually gonna sort of change the grading naturally, you have to make that grade.
Still continue to go to the same place.
So give that, if you go back to colorized rendering for a second. I have a thought. So admittedly, I haven't been out to the site, I haven't walked it. I know you have, Jeff. Your testimony was that there's a very little mature hardwood there worth, worth saving if, if you could. In the interest of buffering that the neighboring properties, right? Thirty seven oh two, eleven, lot eleven oh one, lot eleven oh two, that, that directly border the site. What would you think of putting a staggered row of, of spruce? Such that, you know, you would, you would have even, even maybe more of a buffer?
I'm not against a staggered row. I planted them fifteen feet on center. These spruce are going to get huge over time. They'll probably be twenty five to thirty feet wide at maturity. And they are going to grow together as a natural buffer, a straight line. We could stagger them a little bit. And we could create potentially a thicker buffer. We could add a few more if you'd like. I don't like to, to crowd trees because they really need their separation. They need to be, have their own area to grow in and, you know, it needs, they need to be dry, you know, when you, when you put trees together, there's a lot of moisture, they fight with each other, there's a lot of competition. And it becomes like a diseased, you know, unnatural setting where they're not going to survive. So it's actually better to give the trees more space to let them grow better naturally together than to try to put too much in there at one time.
No, I mean, I agree, I agree with you. And I think, I think the value of, of the blue spruce, which, which unlike white pine are going to drop their lower branches, they're going to be a more permanent visual screen. And they're also going to be a year-round screen on like the deciduous vegetation that's there now. So I think i- if I was one of the neighbors Bruce, then, then the natural vegetation as a visual barrier. I don't know what kind of room you have to play with between the edge of the pavement and the park blue spruce. If you were to put a, a little bit of a stagger in there, fifteen feet on center. Um, that, that would probably cause you to eliminate some of your deciduous trees that you have there behind, you know, next to that row of, of, of blue spruce. But it would give you, you know, potentially an even, an even thicker buffer. So I mean, that's one piece of direction, I guess. If there's room for it. I, I think it was not necessary on the northerly portion, obviously, for, for reasons that you're, you're buffering something that's undeveloped. But for buffer residents, maybe staggered row would work in certain, in certain places.
Sure, and I was looking at planting some dogwoods in front of those pine trees so that you would be able to see the blooming white dogwoods with the green buffer behind them. The dogwoods would get to be about fifteen, twenty feet, twenty five maybe high. And they're going to spread very widely. So that's kind of a secondary, even though they're going to lose their leaves, it's a secondary buffer that I thought would look very visually pleasing from the library side of the property.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, it makes sense. I, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to help the neighbors out to buffer them as, as much as possible. Because that's the, that's the kind of direction, you know, that, that we have, have to do in terms of, of directing you a certain, a certain way and based on the comments on hearing. So just take that under consideration if possible.
May I just reinforce something with the landscaping? I, I have been down there a couple of times recently. And enhancing this landscaping plan is the right direction to go. Using the evergreens and everything like that. Using the existing, just want to reinforce that using the existing vegetation would be a huge mistake, in my opinion. First of all, it's probably ninety nine percent deciduous. So, and this land, this property isn't big enough or deep enough to, to provide enough depth in the winter that there, there would basically be no buffer with the existing landscaping. What, what's proposed is far superior to what's there. And your suggestions even enhance it a little more.
Thanks, Bob.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could, just in terms of point of order, to remind the public that if they're done speaking, to press the lower hand button. And then if they wish to speak again, they can raise their hand again. But if, if the public keeps their hand up after they speak, I don't know if they wish to speak again or if they just kept their hand up. And also, the chat area is not for comments. If you have comments, you need to raise them to the board in the hearing.
I do have one more question, sorry. How long would it prove? Like, how tall of a spruce trees are you looking to plant? And how long do they, they, you know, how much growth do they get in a year? I mean, and you say buffering, how many years do you have to wait before that will have any considerable coverage?
I would say between five and ten years, you would have considerable coverage.
Okay, but in the meantime, we won't have any.
In the meantime, it will grow up and it will start flourishing. It will look better and better all the. In the meantime, it will grow up and it will start flourishing. It will look better and better all the time.
Okay.
So, so how, how big are the trees that you plant? Like, how, how tall are they when, when you first put it in? Probably like eight to ten feet, something like that?
Six to eight feet. Yeah, I believe they'll be eight feet tall. Um, and they'll grow a foot or two a year and, and, and widthwise also. So they should be, you know, at time of planting, five or six, seven feet wide, six feet tall. Um, and, uh, it's just going to take some time to grow, but, but they've got plenty of room. They're going to have real good soil when they get planted properly. And these trees should really flourish. Um, I can't imagine anything's going to stunt their growth, uh, why they wouldn't grow very well.
Dear.
Mr. Reynolds, in the meantime, we wait five to ten years. Is that what you're saying? That's what I'm hearing you say. You, you want us to wait five to ten years without any buffer? That's what I'm hearing you say.
Well, there's already a, a fence that the neighbor has, which will help him. He's already put a fence up there that he didn't want to see that. I guess the natural woodland behind him or something. I'm not sure. He was keeping something within his property.
Keeping his dog inside the fence.
He's got a, uh,
Can you, can you let Mr. Reynolds answer your question? You asked, I think the que- the question is what type of buffer will be there from the beginning? And if you could describe the number of trees and the size of the trees at the time of the planting?
Yeah, there's going to be, uh, you know, eighteen trees along that property line, you know, six to eight feet tall. And, uh, you know, six feet wide that are going to grow up over the next five to ten years to create a, a really nice buffer. There already exists around that property, a chain link fence and, and a wooden fence next to the chain link fence. So visually, those trees are going to be poking above that chain link fence when we start. And they will continue to get larger throughout time.
So, Mr. Reynolds, again, you don't answer my question. In the meantime, the existing woodlands there give us plenty of buffer, right? In the meantime, you're going to decimate all of that. And what are we left with? A chain link fence that's not going to hide anything?
You are
the deck, that's what we're going to see.
You are left planting plan that is going to grow and flourish in the future.
Yeah, in the meantime, you haven't answered my question, Mr. Reynolds. You keep, you keep prevaricating. You haven't answered my question. In the meantime, while we're waiting for the five to ten years for these trees to flourish like you ambition, what do we have as a buffer?
Jeff, don't answer that three times.
All trees. Jeff, don't answer the question.
Okay.
Mr. Orsini, um, Mr. Reynolds has stated eighteen trees with the size are going to be planted. That's the buffer. That is the buffer at the start. He's answered it three times. Now we're just arguing.
Yeah, no, I agree. And, and I, I mean, I think, I think there's some additional direction which, which you were receptive to about, you know, enhancing us on a staggered row. And I mean, it, it's going, this is no different really than any other plan, right? E- everybody who, who starts with a tree doesn't start generally with a forty-foot tree. Just doesn't happen. So, yeah, I mean, I think that I would agree with Mr. Thomas in that, you know, having a year-round evergreen screen is, is far preferable. And I agree, Mr. Reynolds has answered the question. So we can move on.
Mr. Chairman? I, I I'd just like to point out that lot eleven point oh-one, where the complainants reside, doesn't share a boundary with the property where the library is to be constructed. Their boundary is with, uh, the other lot behind that will remain in its natural condition. The buffer here is against lot eleven point oh-two, which we've heard already has a wooden fence there.
Um, Mr. Chase, come to our deck and you will see exactly why we're saying these things. It's, it has nothing to do with just looking at that one piece of land that you're not going to decimate. This is a whole place that we see from our deck. So again, you have a myopic view of this process, right? You only see it from what you want to do. You're not looking at it from our perspective and your, this board has been very consistent, right? So I, I just, I'm just asking you, and we, this is the same thing we've been asking through all the meetings that we've had. Look at it from our perspective. We live here. You don't. Okay? So now I have another question about the pavers and why Mr. Reynolds does not think an impermeable paver is a good option. So this, um, this, 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 uh, water sinks that you're going to make, you know what that means? Mosquitoes. Right? If you put an impermeable pav- paver, no mosquitoes, right? What you're saying is, is a better aesthetic or whatever. That means mosquitoes. Come live here. Deal with the mosquitoes. Okay?
Mr. Reynolds, do you have a response to that?
I don't agree with the mosquitoes necessarily. The rain garden is to infiltrate the water straight into the ground, not to hold the water. And whatever water doesn't go into the ground is going to be piped underground to the bioretention basin. Now that bioretention basin is only going to flood when there's large rain events. And then that bioretention basin will only hold water for twenty-four to forty-eight hours and all the water will be gone. So I don't see where there are mosquito breeding areas, as you may think.
So, Mr. Reynolds, do you know how long it takes for a mosquito to breed and lay eggs?
No, I do not.
Okay, so then do your research, right? And we live here. Again, I can't stress that enough. We live here. There are mosquitoes enough here. We deal with them. What you want to preserve the vision that you have because you think it's nice, it's not helpful to us. Mosquitoes. So there is a reason why the environmental commission recommended impermeable pavers, right? You understand that. You just don't want to do it. So mosquitoes, that's my point here. Okay? And again, we live here.
I think that development of this site would probably alleviate part of your mosquito problem because I think the existing site has plenty of undulations and deviations in places where standing water can potentially be on that existing woodland right now. And we're going to get rid of all of that and make the water flow to a certain particular spot. So I, I honestly think it's going to be a better situation, uh, where we're developing the property.
You're putting in two gardens, right? These water gardens? And by nature, it's a water garden. It will always have water. Mosquitoes breed in one inch water.
It's not
We consider that. So I don't, let me ask you this question then, Mr. Reynolds. What is your opposition against impermeable pavers? What?
I've had a failure. I've had a failure in the past with permeable pavers. And it cost my client a lot of money to replace this pervious paving. And I don't know that they always solve the problems. It, it seems to be a headache for one of my other clients. So I'm trying to avoid a headache for the library. That's all.
Yeah, well, you're giving us a headache.
Any, any other questions or is this, does that conclude that?
All right, do we have, um, yeah, let, let, let's see if we can move on to anybody else that may have, um.
I'm going to go back. Mr. Brochus raised his hand. Mr. Brochus raised his hand again, so I'm going to call on him. Mr. Brochus, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Um, after I made my first comment, the next neighbor who, um, she actually put a lot of genuine research into the reports and she spoke at length about the traffic. I didn't do so because I can read between the lines of what's going on. I know what you guys are going to do, but I mean, she, she actually did a lot of research and you had no answer at the end of it. You just kind of moved along. And this last lady who spoke, she said the same thing. People are not answering questions. What, whatever happened to the lady with the traffic report questions? You just, you never answered them. That's my que- and by the way, I'm, I'm going into my thirty years here in this neighborhood. You're not going to see any kind of serious growth on these dogwoods or spruces for about twenty years. Unless you do like Mr. Randolph Hurst out in San Clemente, California. He actually put in mature trees when he built the Hurst Castle. If you take the tour out there, you'll hear this little tidbit, or you'll hear it from me tonight. So I don't think you're going to do like Mr. Hurst did. So we're not going to be seeing this, uh, projected growth that you're talking about. That's if the trees survive. Suppose the trees and other landscaping fail. Who, who's going to back all this up? You know, when they built this Franklin Park School, the big school behind the little school, there were a lot of promises made twenty years ago. Nobody cared later on. So none of you guys are going to be around to follow up on actually, uh, reconciling the promises that are not kept tonight. Ten, five, ten, fifteen years from now. But I, I, I feel bad because I'm, I'm just a concerned taxpayer. And I, I'm not even over there along the border like these, these poor people are. But I'm, I'm a, I'm a taxpayer who does not like to see money mismanaged for the sake of just spending money so people can enrich themselves. And that's, but I think you are the lady who made all those comments about the traffic report and answer at least because you didn't give her an answer. In fact, there's a lot of evasiveness going on here tonight. Thank you, sir. That's all I have to say.
Hey, Mark, can we get the traffic engineer to chime in?
Uh, we cer- we certainly can.
Um, are we, are we going to finish the comments from the public? As my thought was, we would address the public comments by the traffic engineer and maybe Jeff, if he needs to come back on.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think, I think we should, we not have the traffic e- e- expert testify. Right? While, while the public is, is open, we need to close the pub- portion. Um, let me just ask if there's any other comments. Um, we are going to have, um, the applicants, uh, trap up to the public if there are comments on that traffic engineer because he was on standby. So now that we have a question, um, why don't we close the public portion, have the traffic engineer, um, testify? I just want to, if there are any other comments right now before we, we go into the traffic, and then I have no problem reopening the meeting, um, to talk, uh, if there's, if there's questions from the, um, uh, for the traffic expert. So going one last time for any non-traffic questions. I see a hand, I think. Maybe not.
No, I'm not seeing any hands.
All right, so I'll make a motion to close the public.
Second.
Okay, I'll make a motion to close the public right now.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, we, I think we had that already. All in favor? Mr. Whitelaw, go ahead and, uh, we'll swear your traffic expert in.
Thank you, Mr. Malts. Um, could you unmute Mr. Malts?
We, can we pull down? Can we have Mr. Reynolds pull down the plan? I think it'll make
Right. Uh, Mr. Walts, I believe I'm unuted. Can you hear me?
There he is.
I can hear you.
Mr. Malts.
You can hear me? Yes, and see.
All right. You swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
You can state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record, please.
Yes, it's Harold Malz, M-A-L-P-Z. And my office residence is at nineteen Porter Road in West Orange, New Jersey.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Malts, could you give the board a brief history of your education licensure? Your active, your work history and your passport testimony?
Yes, um, I've, I have a bachelor of science in civil engineering from the Newark College of Engineering. Hold a master of science in civil engineering from the Newark College of Engineering. M- majors in transportation. And I hold a master of science in environmental engineering for New Jersey Institute of Technology. I have a, uh, New Jersey, uh, professional engineer's license since January of nineteen seventy-four. That's, uh, that's forty-seven years. Uh, my license is in good standing. Um, uh, let's see what else. I've been a good trans- transportation consultant specializing in traffic and highway engineering for the past fifty-two years. In fact, as an adjunct from the faculty of the New Jersey Institute of Technology, I used to, in addition to teaching highway engineering on campus, I used to also teach a short seminar on highway engineering to employees of the New Jersey DOT at their main facility in Union, New Jersey. Most of my work is actually representing municipal boards. Uh, probably about two-thirds of my work is representing municipal boards, planning boards and boards of adjustment. And I've appeared well over a thousand times, uh, in front of municipal boards in some courts a lot.
Uh, Mr. Orsini, I'd offer Mr. Malts as an expert in traffic engineering.
I would say so. I, I have to say, uh, over, for my twenty years on the board is probably, uh, the most qualified traffic expert I've ever accepted for
In fact, I would tell you that I've been to Franklin Township many times in addition to doing, uh, studies on warehouses. Uh, I was involved in the nineteen seventies when Easton Avenue was improved. I was involved in that, uh, some of the widening and design, the signals on that roadway in the improvement area for the couple of miles. So, so I've been in Franklin Township many, many times. In fact, whenever I drive down, I'm always taken, when I go up to the municipal building, I remember when those areas, as you drive up the road, were woods and there was nothing there.
Uh, Mr. Malts, you, uh, drafted a report dated June twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one, is that correct?
Correct.
Uh, that was submitted with this application, Mr. Venolo, so I don't believe it needs to be marked.
Does not, sir.
Um, Mr. Malts, it's, I don't want you to go through the entire report. I would ask that you address the comments made by the member of the public, uh, and some of her questions and comments regarding your traffic, uh, study and how you, uh, came up with your data.
Yes, the first thing I'd like to say is, uh, it was pointed out on page one and page two of my report that I noted that accurate traffic counts couldn't be performed at any location as existing traffic volumes have been greatly impacted, reduced, uh, due to the state COVID-nineteen impact. This is not unique to this area. This has been going on ever since COVID came in. Traffic volumes more recently have been coming back up, but they've been greatly reduced for a long time. I was very candid and brought that up, uh, in my report to, to present it as wide, no counts could be done. But more specifically, uh, this property lies immediately adjacent to the elementary school, the Franklin Park Elementary School. In early May, I contacted one of the people in the office, uh, the office workers there and asked them particulars about the current school operations, uh, and also what normal pre-COVID operations were. Uh, particularly in a sense to, uh, you had a sense of what's going on, which would justify why you really also couldn't do the counts. But I would note, uh, just as the ground rule, that, uh, Baylor Street is one way westbound away from Eden Clover intersection, T intersection. Can't go back into Eden Clover from Baylor. It, Baylor goes west, it passes the school and then makes a turn and comes down to, uh, Claremont, uh, where it stops sign controlled on its approach. And I would note, it's, it's really, it's not a dedicated roadway. It's a, you know, uh, it's undedicated. It's basically a thirty-foot wide improved drive that serves the school. The only other, uh, property that has a drive on it is at the very end where it intersects Claremont. There's a driveway to, I believe, a single-family home there, uh, on, on the, uh, Baylor. So that very end, they allow two ways for access to the single-family drive. Otherwise, the school is the only traffic generator on this roadway. I contacted the school about its operations as of early May, two thousand twenty-one. At that time, I was advised the elementary school was not holding in-person classes on-site. All teaching was being done remotely and only school staff were on-site. Uh, and they said if in-person teaching was resumed, the school day would be eight fifty to one forty P.M. I would note the normal school day is eight fifty, as they told me, to three ten, so they wouldn't have been ending at a normal time anyway. The importance of this is that the only generator on this roadway was not really generating its normal traffic by any means. Um, I also asked about, so consequently, you can't do any traffic counts of the roadway. Uh, but when we get into operations, and I'm going to come into that of the library versus the school, you'll see why things are complimentary. In terms of normal school operations, a normal school day pre-COVID was eight fifty to three ten. Free K children are dropped off by the school Free K children are dropped off by the school athletics building in the back. And three-year-olds attend 9:45 to 11:30 AM. School buses, and I was told there's only 16 of them, both large and small total, line up in the school's building front and shot Baylor and on the east side of the school. And all school buses are gone by 9:45. I guess that includes the back. Uh, it's indicated to me that traffic activity along Baylor Street during drop-off pickup time moves well and there are no backup issues relating to the school on Baylor Street. In terms of the having now having the scenario of when the school operates? What what when does the when did the children's, when does the school start and when does it dismiss? What's the traffic activity? I spoke to, uh, the Ms. Jager Adams, the Director of Library Services for Franklin Township. And I asked her what the schedule would be for the school. On page three of my report, she indicated Monday from 10 AM to 8 PM. Tuesday, Wednesday and Friday from 10 AM to 5 PM. Thursday would be 1:30 to 8 PM. Saturday, only four hours from 10 AM to 2 PM and it's closed on Sunday. What is significant here is there's no open opening before 10 AM. All the schoolchildren would be in the majority. They have an 8:15 start. And and related to the annex in the back, it's 9:45 and the buses are out by 9:45. The library doesn't open on any day before 10 o'clock and even later some days. I heard the uh, the resident note that she was concerned about the library being open 10 o'clock at night. Well, in fact, it was only noted to me that Monday and Thursday would be open till 8 o'clock. Uh, otherwise, it closes on weekdays, Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday by 5 PM, which is actually just about uh, at the tail end or just before, uh, excuse me, just before the start of the peak hour or just at the beginning of the street peak hour. So that gives you a sense of how this library site is complimentary with the operation at the only generator. And it's a large generator of the school. So they don't impact one another in that sense. In terms of traffic projections, uh, it was pointed out that this is just a guess. It's not a guess. The the source that's used is a very, it's multiple volumes entitled for the Institute of Transportation Engineers. Trip Generation, the 10th Edition. This is the bible to traffic engineers throughout the country for identifying trip generation and peak hours and the like, the street peak hours, generator peak hours of almost all land use types. And certainly, the library is listed in the source. Uh, this is what we use. It's based on studies that have been supplied for the different land uses to the IT. Who review the acceptability of the documents supplied, the data, and then determine what they want to incorporate into the very voluminous uh, studies. With the various land uses. I noted in my report that for the on the page four, it's table one, traffic projections. Uh, that in the AM peak hour, it was the IT says there's only five trips to be generated. That's total in and out. For this site, which doesn't open until set 10 o'clock, I would imagine that would relate to staff only. For the PM peak hour, which would be corresponding to the rush hour in the afternoon, it has a total of 41 trips. Project is 20 in, 21 out. This is about, uh, I believe uh, one trip every minute and a third either in or out. Uh, this is a very, very light volume. And then on a Saturday, which is only four hours that they're open, the peak is 63 trips. 33, 30 out. That's about one car in or out per minute. These are very, very average flows and they are not considered significant, significant impact in traffic. And once again, the site provides a right in, right out on a one-way roadway. The somebody leaving the site did not decide to make a left and recirculate back to Eden Clover. That intersection, they have to go out, uh, they come in from Eden Clover, but they have to go out going west to come out to Claremont to the stop sign. And they certainly in the morning when school traffic is arriving, um, there's no, there's really no traffic impact at all from this project. And in the afternoon, the school is out by, I believe I said, uh, 3:10. And that, you know, the it's not into the peak hours of the street or the peak hour of the the library. I also, uh, these are not arbitrary statistics. In fact, I would go so far as to point out, this is a library. But if we were talking about a residential use, uh, the New Jersey Residential Site Improvement Standards, which, uh, cover any residential proposal in the state of New Jersey, requires by statute that you have to use the IT trip generation publication for calculating generation from a residential site. Is that a guess? They are statistical, uh, based on statistical data, just like this is. So that's my answer to what it is. I'm not gonna get into site access and site distance and internal circulation. I I'll just say the site circulates very, very well, uh, counterclockwise flow. As Mr. Reynolds pointed out, you have right in, right out, signed accordingly. You can recirculate on site without going out onto the roadway again. The parking stall sizes and aisles always meet the municipal ordinance guidelines. And there's adequate site distance from the exit, the right out to the Clover Eden intersection. So I think, uh, that that essentially says what it is. So, uh, the magnitude of traffic. I've just like put the point out, the project will have no significant or detrimental traffic impacts in any location. The traffic being generated, the numbers that gave were the totals were total in and out. These are very, very low volumes. You know, it's not like somebody's putting a supermarket in here. Uh, so, uh, that that's what I stand by. And these are not, the the analysis is not based on a guess. And I would note that when I mentioned the, uh, the peak hour volumes to Ms. Adams, uh, when I was developing the the study, uh, she indicated that they were probably higher than what they would expect at the new branch. So, and Ms. Adams, I guess, could, if she's available, could comment on that comment to me and why she feels so. But that's briefly, I I really just highlighted the main points from my report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Malz. I think you've covered it very well. Um, and I have no further questions for you.
Thanks, Mr. White. Um, let me just ask if the board has any questions for, uh, Mr. Malz? No questions. Um, thank you very much for your testimony, Mr. Malz.
Thank you.
Peter, um, I I think I think it would be appropriate if I opened to the public one more time.
Absolutely.
In case, since we hadn't had an extra witness.
Sure.
Um, so, um, let me make that motion to go ahead and and reopen to the public.
Could I ask a question for you, Mike, first?
Sure, sure, Bob.
Can we limit the questions and discussion now to the traffic report?
Uh, I think that would be appropriate. I just, I just wonder if, you know, if for some reason it crosses into some other thing. I I mean, I think we've covered it before and I did ask for one last round of comments. So, yeah, let's see if we can, we can limit it to the, to the, to the traffic testimony, to the additional testimony. I mean, that's what the zoning board would do, right? We confide it to the expert as they open, uh, to each one. So, um, let's, let's, let's try to do that. Um, so with that, um, make a motion to open.
So moved.
Have a second? I'll say, thank you, Ted. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the meeting is once again open to the public. Uh, we would ask respectfully unless you have something that you didn't address before, uh, don't need to hear it again, um, to keep your questions, uh, relevant to the to the traffic, um, testimony you just heard.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Avon here has her hand up, so I'll unmute her. Okay, you can go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Malz, were you informed that a lot of traffic goes through this Clover Street during, um, pre-pandemic, um, during rush hour?
No, I wasn't.
A lot of residents, actually Society Hill and all the 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 subdivisions that surround this area. Claremont Clover Place is actually a shortcut. Were you, if you, were you informed of that?
No, I wasn't.
Taken into consideration when you made your recommendations and your calculation?
No, I couldn't do that because there was no way to get, uh, accurate traffic counts.
Exactly, my point.
I'd like, just let me finish. But that's why I went into a discussion of what the trip generation would be for this particular project. Uh, in terms of, like I said in the morning, when the when the project, when the library isn't open, only staff would come in. The only inbound number from Clover Eden is four cars. Uh, in the PM peak hour, which is street peak hour, the inbound is 20 in a in the hour. And the Saturday, when, by the way, the school is closed and the school is closed on Sunday. And this site would also be closed on Sunday, is only 33 inbound. Consequently, these are the magnitude of numbers you're talking about. These are really very, very small numbers. Regardless of what's on Eden and Clover, uh, I wouldn't be concerned about these numbers.
Okay, were you also informed that, um, the residents here are actually, a lot of them are young start families with little babies and little children who play on the street? So you're saying that it is not an issue that you actually have more traffic coming in? So I'm just trying to understand. Yeah, so respectfully, sir, I I'm just trying to understand. Um, because I need data and you don't have numbers here. You have estimates, right? I think, um, I, this is a question for you. As a resident, am I not do that respect that you actually give me accurate information?
I think I have given you accurate information, as I said. You're the one that's using, saying, I'm just using estimates or whatever. Uh, I've characterized my study.
Right?
Can you please let him answer the question?
Did I ask?
Thank you.
I explained very candidly in my report in two locations why counts could not be done. If I went out and did counts there with the school being closed and only some staff coming in and said, this is representative of what's there, you would have told me, you know, I'm full of it. The fact of the matter is, I was very open and candid why it couldn't be done. And that's why a different approach was taken to identify the trip generation for the site, the activity of the main generator Baylor and, uh, what what we'd be adding on to Eden Clover, which is very small volume. Uh, I'm not trying to characterize that I don't care about the people having children. I have grandchildren to stay in with in my home for two weeks right now, young grandchildren. Um, so it's not that I don't care or whatever. Uh, there was a big discussion earlier about, uh, uh, construction of sidewalk. Uh, there's sidewalk being placed across the front of this facility. And, uh, uh, there were board members that talked about constructing more sidewalk, which is a matter to be brought up by others. I'm not part of that. But, uh, I don't think I should be characterized as not caring about, uh, what happens to people walking with young children on the street.
Yeah, so so let me, okay, let me, Veronica, let me interject. We're getting, we're getting a little personal here and and that's when I'll cut off discussion. I'll have you muted and we're done.
Actually, we have another question.
Stick, 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 stick to the facts.
It's about the traffic. It's about the traffic, Mr. Orson.
Okay, okay. Stick to the facts and I don't want to hear any more accusations about what the experts' ulterior motive may or may not have been. It's not even part of the testimony. Stick to the facts or this is over.
I have a really active question, so I have another question.
No, you weren't. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. So my question to the board actually is, again, as a resident, does it not make sense for us to be given data that is accurate? And that means that, does it not make sense to actually postpone this decision until an accurate traffic report with actual numbers can be? That is the point I'm trying to make here. It's 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 pandemic, right? Nothing is normal. So we're we're operating on the assumption that at some point it will be normal. So as residents, are we not do that? That we have accurate data? I know these estimates are as accurate as you can make them, but they're still just estimates.
All right, so I'll 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 reframe this to Mr. Malz. Mr. Malz, if you did this, if you waited for a quote-unquote, "normal," uh, not pandemic, traffic count to be done. Would it substantially change your interpretation of the the trip generation, the use of the library, or its impact in the neighborhood?
No, it wouldn't. In fact, if we, if I got to a point some months from now where traffic, they said, was 100% normal and I count the traffic out here, the trip generation calculations that I identified tonight would be exactly the same. The same amount of traffic, uh, turning from Eden and and Clover going west on Baylor, then coming out at Claremont. That 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 calculation based on the IT land, a trip generation land use would not change one car.
And furthermore, isn't it true that rather than rely on whatever pandemic numbers you could get at the time, you actually went to the school and said, and 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 in during during your testimony, I recall you saying that you asked them specifically, what is their normal trip generation? What is their normal day? Um, and even though you couldn't base the data on that because there was no real-time data to be had, um, you 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 took that into your in into account in your report.
That's why I presented the summary of what the early May condition was because I'd been by the site. And I saw that the school parking lot was only partially filled. And that's why I was told by the office staff that those were staff and teachers that were there. They were doing virtual, uh, presentations. So they were there, they identified who they were. Uh, but once again, you couldn't do, you couldn't do a traffic count. But that's why I put in my report that the school, no matter what, because the library doesn't open until 10:00 in the morning, all the inbound school activity is gone, including the buses before the library even opened. That's how I was able to come up with conclusions. And I would note one other thing in terms of, if you consider that, uh, let's say we we did get somewhere down the road some existing traffic counts that were normal. The, what you have here is the Eden Clover intersection with, uh, with Baylor is you don't have Baylor coming in to Eden Clover. You have Baylor going away. So the way the trip, the analysis works, you look for your critical movement, the one that has conflict. Well, coming from Clover to make a right turn in is not considered a critical movement. So some of your traffic, which I identified, which is not a lot of traffic, like 20 cars on a PM peak hour, 33 on a Saturday, which is off day, it's not, it's not your work day. That traffic is not considered critical. The only critical movement is the northbound left turn from Eden to go into Baylor. Okay, so that would be the only movement that you look at. But once again, if you look at the magnitude of the volume we're dealing with inbound in Baylor and you split it between the Clover side and the Eden, it's once again diluted even more. That's why I'm comfortable in what I presented and I tried to do a very, very thorough review on the what I could obtain here and presented it accordingly. If somebody read the report, they can see I didn't hide anything here. And once again, that trip generation, if traffic volumes got to be normal, that table one would be exactly the same.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Malz. Um, Mark, can we, we'll move on to some other folks with their hands up?
Sure. Okay, Mr. Rocha says his hand up. I I believe, uh, is another question.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Well, Mr. Malz was kind enough to already admit he did not do a traffic report. He's giving us a bunch of conjecture based on what in court they call hearsay. He admitted to the other resident that he doesn't know anything about all of the other non-documented traffic that cuts through uh, that property. As a taxpayer, I'm concerned Mr. Malz was paid full price for what's not really a report. But how, I I feel like I'm in like, twilight zone. How is he making a so-called report that's not, it's not a report? We don't know what's gonna happen. We, no one knows what's gonna happen. How can he just ma- make these things up based on data that might have been true here? And and we know the experts really don't, um, in no matter what we're talking, medical. No matter what we're talking, medical, psychological, the experts, that's anyway.
Is there a question?
Yeah, the question is, how, how is the board accepting this? It's not a report. He admitted it's not a report. He admitted all he did was talk to some people, like Hillary Clinton on a listening tour. He talked to some, that's not a report. You've got to postpone this whole matter until we get to a, a real, a real life condition. And who knows when, there might be six months from now, a year from now. Don't worry, the money will still be there a year from now. We can't base what we're doing here tonight on his non-report. He admits it's not a report. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Maltz, don't, don't respond to that comment.
No, there wasn't a question there. Let's, that was a statement. Let's, let's move on. Mark, who's calling user five?
Okay, so 732-668. Go ahead.
Hi, Hannibal. So I have two questions, actually. So yours, Mr., sorry, I don't have a camera. I can't pronounce the name. I'm sorry if I mispronounced it, the expert, Mr. Maltz?
Maltz, M-A-L-T-Z.
M-A-L-T-Z. Okay, you're saying generation app or whatever standards that you're using to generate this? Where you base your numbers on and it's being used by, I guess nationally or whatever? Could you elaborate more on how, how do they do that?
Well, I indicated in my testimony before that transportation engineers supply studies that they've done at various sites, land uses. It could be residential, it could be office, restaurants, commercial, churches, libraries, you know, all sorts of things. They submit them to the Institute of Transportation Engineers who reviews them. They don't just accept everything straight out of hand, who reviews them. And the ones that they feel are appropriate for incorporation into the data source, they will do that. So the, the studies are a composite. In fact, the, it's put out in three volumes that must be about nine inches deep.
And there, I guess the study takes into consideration the state and like, I guess there's numbers for libraries and all that. So very general, not really specific to like Franklin Township and how this residence used the library, right?
They identify states that they come from, but they don't tell you the specifics about the different studies. They don't provide that to you.
Okay. Now, let me just clarify and you said that, and I don't know if Ms. Adams is in the meeting. So have we also evaluated those numbers against the numbers that we have? If we have any numbers pre-pandemic?
I think you'd have to ask Ms. Adams about the details on that.
Is she around?
We're not calling Ms. Adams. Mr. Maltz has already mentioned that he spoke to Ms. Adams, who thought her numbers would be less than what he found in his report.
Okay. All right, so I guess my other question would also be, so in your report, you said 61, I guess, is the peak number and that's not significant, right? And, um,
Can you repeat that again? I couldn't hear you. Excuse me. Can you repeat what you just said? I couldn't hear you.
Right, so I'm looking at your report and I think the numbers, the maximum on Saturdays, I believe, is 61, which is not significant. And you said that 163 or something like that. And you said that a significant increase in traffic is 100, correct?
Yeah, 100 or more. That's what the state considers an increase, a significant increase.
So if we're way off, if they were way off, since, come on, I know, we try, these are, these are projections, right? And we can be wrong. And if we are way off and it turns out post-pandemic that the traffic going into this library is 100, what would be your recommendation if that was the case? What would be your report be? For, for, that increasing traffic, traffic is 100 visits? I'm just curious, like, what, what, what are the general guidelines for when it's significant traffic versus non-significant traffic?
Well, as I pointed out, significant traffic is 102 vehicles or more at a, at a location. Once again, I have to point out to you, this site is on a one-way stretch of Baylor Street with a right-in, right-out only. So if it generated 100, the 100 isn't all at one source at Clover Eden. Half of it would be coming from Clover Eden. The other half goes out to the west, doesn't interact with that amount. So you wouldn't have the 100 trips impacting Clover Eden intersection. It wouldn't happen. And it's also away from the intersection.
Right, so I'm just, I'm just hypothetical here, Mr. Maltz, because like we live here and right now, we're sitting here, we're all projecting, we don't know, right? What if it turns out that, hey, this library is pretty awesome, it's new, people would like to go here rather than the main library, right? So these are all really projections. I'm not even sure, I've, I've asked data from, from the library before to tell me, have they polled the clients? Have they polled the people that they're really serving? How much are you going to be using this new library? And I didn't get that data. So if, for example, we build it here and then it turned out that the traffic increased into our, into this area, turns out to be more than 100, then so what, what's our, what are we to do? Like ask the residents here? So I'm, I'm just trying to, to figure out. Say, for example, in your study, you found out that there's going to be a significant increase in traffic. What would be your recommendation?
Well, you're, you're creating a straw man for me to joust with.
No, I'm not, I'm not.
No, no. First of all, a- as I explained to you, Baylor Street is one way away from Clover Eden. If you're going to have 100 trips at Clover Eden, that means you're going to have 100 coming out, so it's like 200. The fact of the matter is, it's based, it's based on projections, based on IT data. In terms of what you were asking about, well, what if this is more successful? Would anybody ask people, would you like to go to the library more if it was here? That's not a question for me. That's a question for the library representatives. I can't answer that for you. The study that I've done and traffic projections I projected are based on data presented in the IT Trip Generation publication, the most current edition, the 10th edition. And if I did counts out here in the future, when things are normal, these will be the same traffic projections I would have. And it will be the same if another traffic engineer did it.
So, I'm not talking.
I'm not going to talk about hypotheticals about, well, what if we, we suddenly got 100 cars on Clover? You, you can construct anything you want, you know? At that point, if it got that, then you have to go out and take a look at it again.
Mr. Maltz, what, why, what I'm asking is for your expert opinion, if you're building, I'm, I'm asking your expert opinion, right? Because this is stuff that, you know, might affect us. So, and I would like the planning board to also consider that, right? In terms of their recommendations.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I think I'm going to interject here. So you're, you're asking it, he's giving it, you're not accepting it. So I think we move on. Miss, Miss Avenir is going to have one more bite at the apple and we're going to close. Go with nowhere fast.
I mean, yeah, for the planning board, right? I know it's getting late. This is my last question, I swear. This, this question is for the planning board. What, what is the planning board's opposition to doing another traffic report when everything is normal post-pandemic? What is the board's opposition for that? Because then that's the time, that's all we're asking for, accurate data, right? You know, not hypothetical estimates. So my question to the board, what is your opposition to getting the traffic report redone more accurately post-pandemic?
I mean, there is no opposition. We're, we're here to advise. I haven't heard anything in the traffic testimony that, and in fact, you heard in the traffic testimony, that the conclusions would be no different if we waited for that, all right? And so we have to rely on the experts under oath. And that's what we have. And, and I think that would be no different than any other applicant on which we would actually take a vote, which we're not doing for this application. So, I mean, unless I hear some compelling reason why this is so inaccurate. But what I've heard instead is quite the opposite, is that Mr. Maltz went, you know, above and beyond what he minimally had to do to actually find out what the normal quote-unquote traffic generation was and based his report on that with the full transparency, that he couldn't actually put a, a line in the street and do a traffic count. And, and I think that's, that's perfectly fair. If we wanted to wait, you would, you would really get the exact same data. Because what he did was he went out and found out what the pre-pandemic school use was. And that's principally what is, is generating traffic in here. It's not this library branch.
Just, just, if I can add one, what, excuse me, excuse me, if I could just add one additional thing. The, the, the board doesn't have the discretion to tell the project that comes before it that it wants to put it off. So the, the entity that's coming before this board has the right to have this board provide recommendations. This board can provide recommendations or not provide recommendations. This board can't say, come back in six months, because if it doesn't act within 45 days, it doesn't provide comments. And the project just goes forward. So I understand what you may want the board to do, but the board doesn't have that power. So it's, it's, we're, we're, we're having a discussion about something that can occur, so it's really kind of irrelevant.
Yeah, and it's not just for this application, it would be for any application, like I said, that we would take a vote on. We can't just say, oh, you know, we don't feel like hearing it right now because, you know, this or that, why don't you come back in six months? Well, the applicant's coming now and we're, we're under, like Peter said, a certain deadline in which to act. And so that's, that's what we're doing below. Bob, are you trying to say something? If so, you're on mute.
Still muted.
I just wanted to say, we, we have a traffic expert here who actually came out and visited the site, came out and spoke to people. And unfortunately, due to the conditions, he's, he's got to use the ITE manual numbers. At the zoning board level, we've had experts, including traffic experts, who are giving us reports to try and get us to accept them. And they're not visiting the site. They don't know what, they're doing it all from hearsay. I don't understand what's not to accept about this traffic report. It seems pretty concise, pretty specific and appropriate for a small 5,000 square foot library. Thanks.
Thanks, Bob. Mark, do we have any other? I, I mean, I don't know if the hands up are legacy or.
No, those hands have been up since they just asked their question, so.
All right, then, in that case, I think if there are no other public comments, we'll move to close. Do I have a motion to close the public?
I'll move to close.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so Peter, obviously, we're, we're not in, in position to do, or nor are we are being asked or required to, to do resolution or any comment. I, I don't know how we, how we close this, but.
You close it by making recommendations regarding the project that we will then incorporate in an adopted resolution at your next meeting. So you have heard what the application is, you have heard what the applicant's proposed. You have a technical review committee memorandum that provides some guidance to this board that the applicant has provided a response to. Similarly, you have a report from the environmental commission. And then you have some additional comments that the board has made during the pendency of the discussion on this project. For example, sidewalks and their extension to other places. You would essentially indicate which of those you would like to endorse by way of recommendation and then you would take a vote on it.
Okay, so, so in other words, we're, we're, we're going to, we're going to make a motion or take a vote on the recommendations we're giving, on, on, we're, we're, we're giving the applicant. Okay. So let me see if I can frame this up. So what I would say is, you know, I'd make a motion that the applicant comply with all the comments in the technical review committee report, which they said they would do. I would make a recommendation that the applicant you know, consider or at least make possible the infrastructure for the future, for, for installing solar on the roof, for electrical charging stations in the parking area, bike racks, at least one. The LED lighting full cutoff, which they already testified to. And all outside agency and staff reports. I would, and this, I don't know, is not really on the applicant, but I would like to, I would like to see the sidewalks extended through Clermont. I would like to see, since it's a municipal project and we have a municipal sidewalk fund, looks like a marriage made in heaven. So I'm not going to necessarily put that on the applicant, but I do want to at least endorse, at least memorialize that the board favors that for circulation. I think that, oh, and to also investigate whether we can enhance the row of Norway spruces with some staggered plantings still on center, if possible, to enhance the, enhance the buffer there on the western, eastern, sorry, portion of the site.
Do you want, there was a discussion regarding extension for a connection on Clover Place?
For sidewalks?
To extend the sidewalks along the frontage so that there, there would be a walkable way along to coming from Clover Place.
Yes, please.
Okay, you got it.
How, how strongly are the, those recommendations taken? I'm strongly, strongly supportive of sidewalks. But we're, we're asking this, this applicant, in this case, the library, to extend sidewalks that are off their property to another place, to Clermont. And we don't actually know, we don't have any feeling about how the public in those two streets may feel about that. And based on our lengthy discussion tonight, I don't want the project to get bogged down in a recommendation, trying to fulfill a recommendation that there might be a couple of people vehemently opposed to. And every now and then, there are neighborhoods that don't want sidewalks.
Yeah, and I mean, I, I think that's why I worded things carefully there. So I think Clover Place is, is on their frontage and that's fine. I think I said in, in my, in my resolution proposal that I wouldn't, I wouldn't put the Clermont extensions on, on this project. I would really try to get it done through the, through the sidewalk fund. And I mean, that's why there's a three-foot public right-of-way for sidewalks. So you're not, I mean, if it's, if it's in the municipal interest to make that connection, and I think it is, both for mobility from Society Hill and for 27, I think we should, we should do it. But I don't necessarily want to place it on this applicant because of the fact that it is not on, on the site. And it is, I think, and I think we both believe this, Bob, coverable by the sidewalk fund. And I think we're, we're, we're just make that recommendation that they do it, but don't put it on the applicant. Is that possible, Pete? Just to memorialize.
Just, just, so you guys understand, these are recommendations. That's all they are. They, they can, they can get them, they can say, that planning board, they're out of their mind, they don't know what they're talking about. We don't want to do any of it. They could say, that was a really good idea, they, we never even thought of that, thank goodness they talked about it. Or somewhere in between. And this is a project that, according to the notice, came to you from both the library board as well as the township. So to the extent that this is a project that encompasses both of those entities, I think we can make those recommendations and they will do with them what they see fit. I dare say that anyone who might peruse the minutes of this meeting will understand the amount of time and effort that this board has put into this project and its review and its recommendations. And I think I'm optimistic that they will be given the deference they deserve in light of what this board's done this evening.
Okay, thanks, Pete. That's clear. Okay, so anyway, that, that was my, that was my, that was my motion.
I would move to approve the motion. Second.
Well, I made the motion, so let's have Bob just second it. How about that?
I'll second it.
Perfect. Okay, go ahead and poll the board.
Councilman Chase? Mr. Reynolds, can you please drop your screen so I can see the board members? Thank you.
Councilman Chase.
Councilman Chase? Is he sleeping?
Maybe.
Oral Hawk?
Yes.
Carol Schmidt? Carol Schmidt?
Yes.
All right.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Safa Mansory? Mustafa? I'll come back to you, Charles. Wait, did I hear you?
No, I was trying to tell him he's on mute.
All right, Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Herman Orsini?
Yes.
Mustafa, just nod your head since we can't hear you.
Yes, I am muted, but it's.
There we go.
Yes.
All right, is that everything we got tonight, Mark?
Yes.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, thank you.